Alright guys, we're gonna call to order. Good evening and welcome to the regular session of the Hillsborough School District Board Directors for September 25th, 2018. We always start our meetings with the flag sweep, so please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. And we are going a little bit out of order this evening to begin our meeting with a very special action item. And so I'm ready to hear the motion on page 13. I'm happy.
I move that the Board of Directors appoint Jessica Jose Nickerson and Samantha Vega Contreras to serve as student representatives to the Board of Directors for the 2018-19 school year.
Second. It has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim that we appoint the student representatives to the Board of Directors. Is there any discussion? Erica? No? Or let's do the wrong one.
We switched.
Okay, oh great, okay.
Yes. I just wanted to take a minute to recognize Representative Janine Solomon and the audience tonight, who's a former Hillsborough School Board member, who for eight years of her service won in student representatives on this board. And I'm just so excited that she could be here tonight to see part of this happening.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Kim. I agree. Any other discussion? Okay, alright, well without further ado, it has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim that we appoint Jessica Jose Nickerson and Samantha Vega Contreras to serve as student representatives to the Board of Directors for the 2018-19 school year. If you would like to approve that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Take that motion. Excellent. And so now, we are going to administer the oath of office to our two newest representatives to the Board. So let's begin with Jessica. Jessica, I'm gonna come, meet you in the middle, how about? Okay, come on down here. There's lots of stuff in here. Very busy. Okay. You can do some. Sure, sorry. There you go. Okay. Sure. Okay. So let's do our, we'll raise our right hand, and then I'm gonna say a shirt, and then you will be ready.
Okay.
Okay. I, Jessica Jose Nickerson.
I, Jessica Jose Nickerson.
Will support the Constitution.
Will support the Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And will discharge the duties.
And will discharge the duties.
Of student representative.
Of student representative.
To the Hillsborough School District.
To the Hillsborough School District.
Board of Directors.
Board of Directors.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. And we'll do it the very same way. Alright. Right here, okay.
I, Samantha Vega Contreras.
I, Samantha Vega Contreras.
Will support the Constitution.
Will support the Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And will discharge the duties.
And will discharge the duties.
Of student representative.
Of student representative.
To the Hillsborough School District.
To the Hillsborough School District.
Board of Directors.
Board of Directors.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Excellent. Congratulations. Sorry. Jessica and Samantha. Sorry, I had to do the video camera too. Maybe hold your materials. Hi, Karen. I'll be in the picture. For one, okay? And one more. Do you want one without me in it? It's kinda photobombing. Sorry. Okay. Alright, now we're gonna move right along with our agenda, and we have Director Eudera Martinez to make a special recognition.
Good evening. So tonight, the Board would like to recognize Sharon Ingles. Can you just come up? I don't know if he can everyone here, I don't know how close I have to be to this mic.
Pull it down.
So Sharon is a third grade teacher at the Tama Elementary School, and recently, she won a Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, which is the highest recognition available for a teacher in the K through 12, K through 12 subject in the United States. So it's a pretty big deal. She has been a leader in the district, and has even lent her voice to speak with elected officials about the importance of science. And as a recipient of the award, she was flown to Washington DC where she got to speak on a discussion of STEM and also STEM education priorities. And that was led by the White House Office of Science and Technology Policy and the National Science Foundation. She also won a honorary award provided by the NSF and a Presidential Citation. So we really want to congratulate her on this amazing achievement, and we have a certificate.
Can I just say, Sharon's on there just to embarrass you further. So Sharon's one of those people that's been a STEM leader for us for years and years and years. She's one of those people that whenever there's an elected official coming to town, we wanna make sure that we get them in front of Sharon. So she's so many times before, she's presented to the Hillsborough Schools Foundation at one of their events, and just over and over giving her motivation, her commitment, her dedication for her students on behalf of STEM. It's just been incredible. So thank you for everything that you've done for our students.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Sharon. Thank you very much, Eudera. We are really lucky and happy to have you. And folks, it's pretty much downhill from here, so feel free to step out anytime. It's less than a second, nothing wears off. Well, I'm so sorry, I can't believe I did that. We have some fantastic guests actually, and then it goes downhill. You can't miss the HSF people. Oh my gosh, they're never gonna let me down. Okay, excellent. Alright, so before we start on that excellent and exciting topic, we do need an approval of the agenda. So I'm ready to hear your motion.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second. It is been moved by Martin and seconded by Erica that we approve the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Okay, so Martin made the motion, Erica seconded to approve the agenda as printed. If you would like to approve that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, the agenda is approved. We now are at audience time. As far as I know, we don't have any cards. If you would like to make a statement to the Board, you can fill out an audience card, which is on the back table, and give it to Dalas Mahir. So I'll just wait for a second to make sure that anybody who wants to has the opportunity. Okay, excellent. Now we move right along into the reports and discussion portion of the evening. So the Citizens Fond Oversight Committee, I shouldn't, that's gonna also be exciting. Okay, so the two exciting things are coming up next, don't worry. Okay, so Fond Oversight Committee with Adam.
Could I just request?
That I not say you're not exciting?
No.
Okay.
That too. Could we have the HSF just go first?
Sure.
Our representative from the Citizen Oversight Committee, he's not here yet, he's coming in for a report, so.
Okay, sure. Mel, do we need to make a motion to amend the agenda, or can we just kinda?
Perhaps.
If that's okay with our fantastic HSF people, then we would love to hear from them first. I think they're very excited. Come on down, let's hear all about it. While they're coming, I just watch them coming. The Hillsborough Schools Foundation is amazing, and so is their Executive Director. They do so many things for the Hillsborough School District, and I'm also trying to make up for my horrible snafu, but in all seriousness, they do so many things, and you're so lucky and so grateful to have them. So a very warm welcome to you, Erin Carlson. Thank you for being here.
I thought if I just went like this, it would change slides. Well, thank you for having us for our annual report for the Hillsborough Schools Foundation, and we do hope to enlighten you and give you something good to take home and be happy about. Lisa. So I'm Erin Carlson, I'm the Executive Director for the Hillsborough Schools Foundation, and with us tonight, we have Sue Wade on our Board, as well as Kathy Robinson, and then Jimmy Watson, my coworker in crime. And I just have to bring Representative Solomon into it, as she has been a supporter for HSF, I think, from the very beginning as well. So we are really happy to be here, because we got lots of good stuff to tell you about. It's moving. It's been really great. It's like an escape.
Which slide do you want me to look at?
Nope. So HSF has provided many grants in the Hillsborough School District. We have given out almost, just in this last year, we gave out over $50,000 to innovative grants, again, that educators apply for, like Sharon Ingles is a constant grant writer and is always advocating for her students. And this is one of the biggest ongoing ways that we give for HSF, and we've given over a million dollars, maybe almost two, for different programs in the school. So teachers get an idea that are outside of the regular budget dollars, and then they apply for grants. So the Maker's Stakes at Jackson Elementary School, that was a really fun one. Their application was great, they wanted to give some creativity, but flexibility and organization to all of their STEM items in their library. And we happen to have someone on our grant committee that saw a sewing machine on Facebook in the buy-sell thing, and they had a sewing machine listed in their grant. And so she contacted them and said, "If it doesn't sell, would you be interested in donating it to the Hillsborough Schools Foundation?" So the person pulled their ad, donated it, and all kinds of stuff to go with it. And so we got to give the money, but they didn't have to spend all that extra money on the sewing machine. So we're always trying to get a little bit more for every place that we possibly can. We did something similar at Farming to the View with their bullsting the head. Moo Berry submitted a grant to increase their dual-language books in their school. They sent us a photograph along with their grant that had, and they're dual-language, right? And they sent us a grant in their picture of this bookshelf, and it was, I don't know if they faked it for the picture like on those reality TV shows, but it was very weak with photos that were dual-language. And so the committee overwhelmingly, "Let's fund this, let them get as many books as they possibly can." And it also is encouraging non-native English-speaking parents to also learn to read along with their kids. So it's been very successful. At Moo Berry, so years, for a couple of years, we funded the mariachi program that is students from all over the district. And then we got a grant from Moo Berry asking for costumes and variety of things for the Latin dance club. And that was a very fun grant, and we worked with another one of our partners from the Siegels Foundation, and they funded that grant so that students from all over their school could participate and have costumes and feel like they're part of the game. So it really doesn't matter what school, we just like to read the grants, and we'll run right out there. At Jackson, we helped, they did a big playground where their students designed it, and so they had a bunch of ideas about how to provide equipment for kids of all different abilities, and so their inclusive playground. Then I also helped them to rework the grant to submit it to other places. Am I even close to where we said we're gonna be?
This is the video. Oh. Oops. So we raised money.
I've already done this once, you just wouldn't know.
Can you first play?
Well, I've done that.
The Hero's Journey project really started with studying Greek mythology every year in seventh grade, and then we started studying the Hero's Journey as kind of a plotline and how story unfolds, and that can be applied to all sorts of different stories. And then we have students create their own Hero's Journey stories. We were able to create them on the Chromebooks this year, which was really great. Our stories were also in two languages, so there were a few that were in Spanish and English. And our Spanish class, we will help out a little with that, but most of the Spanish speakers in my home class were able to translate their words into Spanish. So that was a cool aspect to a couple of the stories. So once the stories were created, we then downloaded them into PDFs and uploaded them to, we were able to print them in these really great formats with a clear cover and binding, so it's a real book. We did them in black and white, and we tried to get the kids to pick as many kind of line drawings as possible to make them like a real coloring book. And once we got them printed, that happened in early February, we started organizing the coloring crayon part of the project. We were collecting a bunch of broken crayons and having our shop department start to work on 3D molds. Once that got rolling, there was a lot of trial and error with 3D printing, then we ended up, we started planning the field trip. So we chose Lickin Street, which is a dual-language school. We had about 45 secondary students come over, and they were able to listen to three different books being read by our separate creators and experience kind of, you know, what the Hero's Journey is like, and all different versions of it, because the stories cannot be very different. I'll wrap the bat, a kid knowing that their work's gonna be published automatically started up the engagement factor in the costume, for sure. So, and just for them to know that they had a chance to go and then meet with another kid and share their work, and I think that that really got some of my students that are normally a little disengaged, they got them more into the project, because they knew they had to have a final product to show somebody, and they needed, they wanted to be proud of it.
So that's a good peek for all of you into what happens when we give those donated dollars into the classroom, but it isn't just that classroom, it's elementary school that is a partner with them also gets to move on and have something exciting happen with them too. The coloring books that the authors that wrote them are showing them, and then they've made these 3D molds of different pieces of their items to be colored, and then made crayons, and then they give the kids the crayons that match the pieces in the different coloring books. And what I loved about it the most is that all the colored crayons that I had accumulated with two boys that are well into their twenties and somehow kept them, I donated all of them to Evergreen. So it's the gift that keeps on giving, and now you know where you too can donate them. So how do we raise the money? Our biggest fundraiser is, you might recognize the numbers, is our annual gala and auction. And this year, it's being held on February 23rd and a Saturday, and our theme this year is, Janine's like dressed for it and ready to go. As it is, it is the Emerald and Ruby Gala of Wicked Good Time. So there you go. It's the 80th anniversary of the Wizard of Oz this next year, and it is, Wicked is coming to town in the summer, so I can guarantee you, there'll be some tickets for Wicked up in the auction, and we are going to incorporate courage and heart and brain into all that we do. So we're already, it's off and running, there was actually a meeting this afternoon with the Event Center, and we last year raised money to get going on our, finish up our STEM kits and move forward with our middle school initiative, and we raised 190,000 at last year's event, and I think this year will be even bigger. We have lots of different community partners, from Premier Rewards to New Seasons Market, you can drop the bottles and cans off in the front of their store without having to touch them. We have two Blazer events coming up, one in December, another in April. We have a great partnership with the Hillsborough Hops, we do a STEM Day in the summer, it's usually only 105 degrees, but. And then the Hillsborough Police Department will be doing a shred event in November, it is one day, it's the first Saturday of the month, fourth, November, and it's 8 to 12 right here in the parking lot, and for a suggested donation of $5, you can bring up to three banker's boxes and have the, they'll shred it right here in the parking lot in these big machines. And they do it two times a year, so this first one in November, the funds are divided by four and given to the four main high schools, drug and alcohol-free grad night parties. So it's a way for the police department and the community to give to those groups, and it's typically around $1,000 per school that those donations are given. And then in the spring, we use them towards our innovative grants, and it's really low staff, low maintenance, and there's always, I can't believe it, opened at 8:00 in the spring, and there were cars waiting at 7:15 in the morning. So for 40 seconds of work, but it really is a great partnership, and we're thrilled to help people safely clean out their garages. They got a happy button. I'll push it so many times, it's gonna be the start screen here any second. Well, we're doing a phone-a-thon, and it will be here in this building on October the 8th, and we have eight different caller clubs coming to participate, and we have already started doing the training, had two of them earlier today. And students from the Youth Advisory Council, as well as Hill High, Glenhoe, Liberty, and Century will be coming and dialing for dollars, so they'll be upstairs busily on the phone. I didn't touch anything. Up on the phone trying to get funds for, I didn't touch. And. This is really entertaining. This needs to happen to Lisa, not us. So Amplify Science, the Hillsborough Schools Foundation donated almost $150,000 for STEM programs in all of the kindergarten through sixth-grade classrooms in the school district, and that took us about three years to do. And now we're getting, working on middle school projects, and those are going to be, again, didn't touch it. At the, we're starting with one middle school, we'll work through it and fund what they need, and then move on to the next, and the next, and the next. So the first one to go was Pointer. They are eager, ready, and willing. And when we asked the, when we, nope, I didn't do that. I'm not such a terrible tech person. At Middle, at Pointer, so we've been asking the teachers, what do they need at their middle school, I'm just gonna hold it up so you can see I have been that. We've asked the teachers what they want to see in their classrooms, what do they need to make the best experience for students to start looking at career, technical ed. So Pointer was so ready to go, I think they were ready a year ago. They have this really incredible teacher, and then a network within their building, where we learned that students in that class, that they have, that throughout the school with lovely, wonderful middle school kids, their first year they're coming in, and the second year they're on their way out. So it's kind of a hard time to collect a kid, and we know that their success in high school depends on how they do in middle school. So how about give them a really great road to travel? So this class, we learned that the principal has to go to language arts classes and science classes and math classes, because there will be discipline problems somewhere along the way with those kids, but has never had to go and visit this classroom, because the kids are so engaged. So what they wanted from us, yep, is, the first step was a wall. And from where this picture is taken is where all the woodworking is, and there's a ventilation hood and all kinds of things going on all around me. That open window where the black curtain is coming, it has, it has opened to a computer lab. So all of the computers were dusty, and the keyboards were dusty, and he said, "I would like a wall, but I wanna be able to see through it." So we have already started, and we provided the funds to, it made their classroom a little bit bigger, and then made a wall with glass so that the teacher can see through it and keep an eye on the kiddos, but it also protects that investment that the school has made into those computers. And they do a television station and a virtual reality lab, they do robotics, there are some kids are building skateboards, they do aviation, and build airplanes out of paper and coffee stir sticks, and then they launch them to see what kind of a heap of a pile they go into, or how long they fly, and it's really great. So we are super excited about our next initiative, which is building those middle school STEM programs for all students, so that we can have the best, continue to have the best education possible in the region. So that's, I know that Travis, I said I would just point, Travis and other folks took a trip down to California to see what this kind of thing looks like in, for CTE, and sent us back all kinds of pictures of what their labs look like, and I think that's a good place to dream from. And this is a big initiative for us, this is six figures for every single building, and we are excited to give something for kids to look forward to and be excited about. So, I kept it under an hour. So we invite you all to come out and participate in the phone-a-thon, see those kids in action, they'll start dialing around 6:00, and we'll do a training in here at 5:00, and I know that it will go on better. And then they'll be on the phones and come out and support them, and those high school kids, they really work hard and think how hard it is for you to make a telephone call and say, "I'm raising money for my race for the Cure team, can you pitch in $50?" And it's not, it's not different from that where they're calling and saying, "I'm calling on behalf of the Hillsborough Schools Foundation, I'm a student at Glenhoe High School, and we're trying to raise money for our club to go to the theater competition in Ashland this year." My Juno came making that bottom top. And so you'll hear the kids' stories, you'll see what they're doing, and then know that that's how we fund those activity programs and for those kids. So it's a, it'll be an interesting and fun event, I always learn something new. So that's HSF.
Any questions or comments for Erin?
There are some kids are building skateboards. They do aviation and build airplanes out of paper and coffee stir sticks. And then they launch them to see what kind of a heap of a pile they go into, or how long they fly, and it's really great. So we are super excited about our next initiative, which is building those middle school STEM programs for all students so that we can have the best, continue to have the best education possible in the region. So that's, I know that Travis, I said I would just point, Travis and other folks took a trip down to California to see what this kind of thing looks like in, for CTE, and sent us back all kinds of pictures of what their labs look like. And I think that's a good place to dream from. And this is a big initiative for us. This is six figures for every single building. And we are excited to give something for kids to look forward to and be excited about. So I kept it under an hour. So we invite you all to come out and participate in the phone-a-thon, see those kids in action. They'll start dialing around six o'clock, and we'll do a training in here at five, and I know that it will go on better. And then they'll be on the phones and come out and support them. And those high school kids, they really work hard and think how hard it is for you to make a telephone call and say, I'm raising money for my race for the cure team. Can you, can you pitch in fifty dollars? And it's not, it's not different from that where they're calling and saying, I'm calling on behalf of the Hillsboro Schools Foundation. I'm a student at Glencoe High School, and we're trying to raise money for our club to go to the theater competition in Ashland this year. My Jonah Buckingham and that bottom top, I don't get it. And so you'll hear the kids' stories, you'll see what they're doing, and then know that that's how we fund those activity programs and for those kids. It's a, it'll be an interesting and fun event. I always learn something new. So that's HSF. Yeah.
Any questions for Paul and Sprayer? I don't mind if, well, it says me. Okay. Okay.
So I just, I just wanted to take a flashback in history a little bit. So I don't know how many years ago, maybe seven or eight years ago, Erin invited me to go up to the Seattle area with her and Laura Beck, and the plan was to go and visit some of those school districts and foundations who had really tight partnerships, who were doing great things on behalf of students. And on the way back, we were up and back in one day, and on the way back, we stopped at a little teriyaki shop in the strip mall in Tacoma, and at that time we started.
It's a gas station.
Yeah. I'm trying to blast that.
I'm not making sure anyone's.
The cheapest thing they have is a gas station or something else. As we were sitting down talking about it, it became clear that we were both interested in doubling down on our commitment to each other. So the foundation was interested in aligning with the work that the school district was doing in a very deliberate way, and we were very interested in supporting the foundation in ways that we never had before. And at that time, we, we made commitments to each other that we would, that support would be very practical and very deliberate. And I think in those, in the years following that, we had done just that. The work that the Hillsboro Schools Foundation does on behalf of our students, it just hires us an amount of time they take, it's just so impressive, from science kits to building walls to millions of dollars of grants that they've been able to deliver to the staff and students is absolutely amazing. So we look forward to our continued partnership with you, and just thank you so much for all the work that you do on behalf of our students. It's greatly appreciated.
Wow. Thank you for all of your help, and I have hundreds of volunteer hours from many people that are here. And we have raised, what we've given more than almost four million dollars since 2000. And last year, we had our biggest ever in fundraising. We went from a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar foundation to a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar foundation. And that is, when we join memberships with nonprofit groups around, that five hundred thousand is a real marker, and we are so close. And I'm really excited about it, and thank you for the support that you give us so that we can make our support for you even bigger.
Thanks. Mark, if you have more questions, I think you'll go with my homework.
Oh, no, it's my question at the phone, I think at a previous phone-a-thon, we've delivered pizzas to the students. Are we doing that again?
We are doing that again. Just been in contact with Erin today to find out how many students and how much pizza they're, you see.
So many board members sit all around the cart?
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay. Well, I, I delivered pizza this last phone-a-thon, and I had requests for like salads, including burritos. I had a salad, I'm like, what is this?
I told them no thrills. No big stuff.
They're like, oh, the free your salads. I'm like, nope.
And no chicken avocado either.
Any other questions, Hammond? Erin, we just, as I said, we appreciate the work that you guys do so very much. So thank you, and we're very much looking forward to it as we possibly. Anyway. We'll be back. Okay. Bond Oversight Committee report.
Matt Buckingham, our chair, was not able, well, it's funny, I'm being here tonight, probably will be busted into pretty soon, but this is his report. He has prepared this along with the rest of the committee, and I'm happy to present it. And like I said, I'm hoping Matt will be able to join us here shortly to pitch in. Just a reminder of what the Bond Oversight Committee is all about. Back in November, we passed a four hundred and eighty million dollar bond issue, and part of our commitment of the community was to provide a committee with oversight responsibility for budget and schedule primarily. So we meet on a monthly basis. We have ten community members and two students who were appointed by the school board. We had our first meeting in April, and since then, we've been meeting on a monthly basis to talk about where we are with the projects that in April were upcoming for the summer of 2018. And we met last Thursday to kind of debrief on all the projects that we finished during the summer of 2018. And our July and August meetings consisted of field trips, where we went around and looked at projects that were happening around the district. This is the foundation for the new modular building at Rebuild, and that's our meeting. And that is the parent bus drop off at McKinney, and that is, I think, the mechanical room at Rebuild. We pulled the boiler out. So as you know, we have a very ambitious slate of projects for this 2018 school year. We had thirty-seven different projects that we completed over the summer, total of just over thirty-one million dollars worth of construction. Sounds like a lot of construction. With that perspective, next summer, we will start on over two hundred million dollars worth of projects. There he is. Matt Buckingham.
Grand entrance. Don't.
You said this wasn't gonna be the first thing on the agenda.
Was it? You said it. This is Matt.
I'm so sorry.
So I've just done some intros. I kind of walked us through the formation of the committee and just started talking about our 2018 project, so.
Anyway, Matthew, chairman of members of the board. My name is Matthew Buckingham. I'm the chairman of the citizens of Bond Oversight Committee, and we have had a very busy summer. As the slide says, thirty-seven separate bond projects. Here's the thing about it, is I spent a lot of time this summer on a bus that had way too little legroom for me, right? And by the time it was over, all the field trips we did to all the schools, I was convinced we must have done a hundred million dollars worth of projects. But actually, we only did about thirty million dollars worth of projects, of which only about twenty-four million of them were actually budgeted and originally bought. So some of the projects went a little over budget, and one of the reasons we did, ah, yeah, here we go, total current budget, total current projected budgeted costs were thirty-one million. I said thirty, it was actually thirty-one. So about four million of that was not anticipated. Okay. One of the ones that went a little over budget, the other is one right here. This is a photo of Rebuild. We'll talk a bit more about that later. This is the Bond Oversight Committee's responsibilities. We meet every month. I just gotta say, it was a signal, honor it was for you to appoint me as chairman of this committee, because when I applied, I had really no interest whatsoever in chairing the committee. I just wanted a seat in the room. And when I went to the first meeting, it quickly became apparent that everybody else in this room knew more about what was going on at their kids' schools than I knew about the whole process, right? So like at Rebuild here. Yeah. There we go. Adam. What am I aiming at? Adam, what am I aiming at?
There's not even anything.
Here, okay, I'll fix it a little. Oh, this right here, this is really big. This is the foundation where we put the modular building at Rebuild. One of the things that drove me crazy about Rebuild as a citizen is I drove by Rebuild School a lot. I loved its schools, it was one of the oldest schools in the district. They had, they had Pop Murphys down at a strip mall that's like down, and I was kind of cut behind there. I bet I'm not the only one who does that, right? And I would drive by these grubby little portables, right? They had this moss growing on the roof, and I'm saying to myself, this is one of our oldest, greatest, most venerable schools in the whole district. Can we have a little more respect than giving them portables that had never been ported anywhere and never will be, okay? And they've got moss growing on the roof. I mean, it's not Ivy League, it's like Moss League, right? And what we did was, we tore out those portables. There was a modular building in there that wasn't too bad. We reused that at North Plains. We, these guys came in, and this enormously well-choreographed ballet of trucks and hallways and moving gates and fences, they were able to take it to North Plains. We still got good use of that building. Meanwhile, we got rid of all those grubby portals that I couldn't stand, and we built this. Okay, here we go. Here's, here's the foundation where we put the building. Okay, that's another photo of something else. This is still, that's Rebuild.
McKinney.
This is McKinney down here, which I always confuse Jackson. Really close, okay? Okay. First, here, okay, so before, here's what was there before. It was like a playground there on the floor. Then during the construction, we put in that foundation I showed you in the earlier slide, and then we started putting in the building. And the thing is, this is modular construction. When I was picturing modular construction, I was picturing, again, something where it was all gonna come in kind of like in one piece, right? But no, I, when I was watching this thing go up, like I said, I drive by a lot, I noticed that I couldn't tell the difference between that and traditional trick, traditional stick construction, because it's in, it's like it's in panels or it's in.
It came in eleven different components.
Components, yeah, which we had to, which we had to put together on that foundation to create this. So this, although it's a modular building, it's not one mode. It's about.
It's by classroom, cafeteria, kitchen, restrooms.
And I gotta say, we have to say that anytime you have construction, new construction in the school district, especially when you're talking about doing like four hundred million dollars with the new construction, it's gonna inconvenience some people. Some principals are gonna be a little bit cranky, some teachers are gonna feel a little bit pressured, you know, rushed, pressured and all. Gotta say that just from the very beginning, Robin Farret Romero was just amazing in her patience in dealing with all the constructioners who are crawling over school. Because how this kind of worked is, is I believe in about late May.
Middle of May.
Middle of May, basically, constructioners came in there, basically said, hi, nice to meet you, get out. Don't let the door hit your exit on the way out.
Just the fourth.
Just the fourth. And the teachers, just knowing that this school's been so great and that, they were very accommodating. And on top of that, when they all came back in the fall, we had a little bit of a problem. We just weren't really quite done. And again, I was mentioning how, what a pleasure it's been being a chairman on the committee. And one of the parents on that committee is Sonia Ackman, and I wanted to know what was going on for the parents and teachers at Rebuild. I only had to ask one person, and that was her. She knew exactly what this was doing to the teachers and affecting some of the kids. And we had to open the school a couple days late. Parents were really cool about this, teachers were really cool about this. The position this put the teachers in, whoever was, we did not get them into that school until like three days before the students were back. Isn't that great?
Yeah.
And normally, they get a week.
Right. They get a week to prepare. A classroom is already a classroom.
It's already a classroom. Exactly. And when they got back, what they found was, a classroom was nothing like the classrooms they had left, because we'd come in with new furniture, new luxury, new flexible furniture to get into that, new technology, we're gonna do all that. This is what it looks like, kind of now. They're working still, they're working on it, yeah. Okay, here's the, here's the flexible classroom furniture, I was telling you about. This is really cool. My daughter was one of the kids who got to try out the furniture in the pilot project to see how it worked, and she was really impressed. This really gives teachers a lot of options and just flexibility, they have rooms, desks, they have rooms and desks in team groups, you know, how kids, a lot of it is team projects now. It's not sitting in a row, looking up at the front, sitting with the teacher. This was one of the projects that's on budget. These eleven schools, elementary schools got it this summer, and more are gonna be getting it.
The remaining elementary schools will get theirs in the next.
Next summer. Okay. It's really, some of this is like, sit down, sit down desks, some of it is standing up desks. Like if you could get a picture of that later on, I'll show you. Here's another thing I was really pleased to see this people summer, are newer schools, such as Century, Liberty.
Well, Liberty primarily has turf.
Liberty, not sure. Sorry. They will. They will. But Glencoe, which was built when I was in high school, I had friends who went to Glencoe when it first opened, no turf, they have grass. And in Oregon, that's kind of a problem. Drainage is a problem. Wet fields for softball is a problem. But in this bond, we had some students who was just really, my heart was really full, and they would come to these parent meetings and say, no, we're graduating this year. We're never gonna, we're never gonna see this, we're never gonna go back and see it, but we're never gonna use it. It's never gonna be something that's gonna benefit us, but it would be great if we could put in turf fields at the schools that don't have. That was Glencoe, that was Hill High. Not only we put in turf, we put in lights. And the lights have become so advanced over the years, they're not the big glaring lights that you imagine when you think about going to a night game. They're very directional and able to light right on the field. So if you're standing here on this sidewalk, you're in the light. If you're standing like here in the dirt, you're not in light. If you're in this house over here, it's not shining into your backyard, destroying your lighting of your backyard. Oh, parent bus drops. This was something that is really a problem in a lot of schools. I went, my kids went to Wilmington View, they were transfer students. Wilmington View was great, it had a frontage road, it has a lot of parking, so getting my kids in and out of that school is not a problem. But at a lot of schools, it's very difficult, like the school my kids were scheduled to go to was Mitchell Bridge. Mitchell Bridge had a real problem with, you got buses coming in to pick up kids, you got parents coming in to pick up kids, you got kindergarten teachers that don't want the wrong parents taking home the wrong kids, or people, or bad guys taking home kids that don't want them, right? So it's really, it really was a mess. So what we're gonna be doing with this bond project is basically going through, and this summer, we did it in four elementary schools. By the time we get done, all of the schools, I believe, will have separate parent drop-off, bus drop-off racks. So for example, I believe, pardon if I'm wrong, this is, the Lat Akers? Yeah. Lat Akers. This is plenty of this past road up here. Parents can come in this little lane right here, they have to circle around, they're here, I guess they drop their kids off up there, right? Or, or actually, they can drop them here. What this is, what this little yellow thing you see is, that's a little, it's a curb cut. So like, let's say you've got a child that's in a, got some kind of a disability device, you know, like a wheelchair, something like that, they can turn right up off the street and get right up on the sidewalk, no problem. So parents with cars are dropping their kids off here, going to the school. Meanwhile, the bus is going here to correct them and have a separate drop-off down here. What that means is, you've got buses and kids, you've got cars and kids, but you don't have buses and cars and kids, right? And it just makes it a lot safer, and I think too, we can also control access a lot better of, you know, visitors coming to the school. Okay, playgrounds. We've got, old playgrounds were taken out and put them in, and I would say it was better not created by me, if you could rebuild West Union and W L Henry. I remember back when I was on the bond committee, I actually paid a visit out to West Union and just, you know, just to look at the issues of their playground. They had a lot of problems, you know, failing playground equipment, not failing, but you know, drainage was a big thing, you know? Flooding was a big thing. But at these schools, we've come in with this new playground equipment, it's really cool. We have two high school students, they may have graduated by now, we have two high school students that were on the bond committee, right? So one and I, one of our field trips, we went out to West Union, and the girls got to play on the playground equipment, right? And man, they were having a good time. And I'm thinking to myself, you know, if a twelfth grader can find something to do on this playground, I bet a kid that's twelve can find a lot to do on this playground, a kid that's younger. And we got, okay, two kids on our, the two, hold on, kids. The two students on our committee are Mia Tignori and Dani Absma. Dani actually brought her mother out on one of the field trips. Do you remember the name? I never, I forgot.
Angela.
Is she here? She did. So Dani's mother, Angela, decided she was gonna start doing cartwheels on the synthetic turf field. There's a little patch of like synthetic turf for the kids to play on. She decided she was gonna do cartwheels. And I thought to myself, ma'am, I just, I, this is not gonna end well. I don't think you should do it. And while I was saying that, she actually executed several cartwheels, as did her daughter. I haven't executed, or, uh, executed a cartwheel ever in my life, even when I was a kid, I did it, right? But they were having a great time, uh, we had our helmets off by that time. It was a cool way to do it, there was already kids that summer playing on the equipment. I think these are gonna be a real benefit to our little communities, even if not outside of the campus. They're all like, this is plastic, this is metal, the thing you can't see here maybe so well, actually I can see it here. There's little games you can play, there's puzzles, there are plastic drums that you can beat on that make all these great sounds. It's all just really into advantage for our kids. Okay, this is a little bit closer to mine for me, I believe this is my kid's school, and this is Smartest New, right Adam? I think so. Again, there were some portals that the school was using, one was being used for a music room, I believe one was being used for math lab, one was being, uh, used for a room where the distorted junk, old furniture, stuff like that. I used it for my Cub Scout meeting room, great, it's all that stuff, right? But again, there were these portals, they had those windows, no facilities were to them. And what we did is we came in and run into one of the classrooms where, you know, you've got daylight. Talk a little bit more about some of the, do they, did they have bathrooms?
They have restrooms.
They're restrooms.
The portable classrooms that were out there did not have restrooms. Had, this is actually McKinney, I think, and that's the one we put in the fourth place. But none of the, none of the, uh, portables that we replaced this summer had restrooms in it. Maybe, and that's a big deal.
And that's when we heard from our teachers is that, for example, at Reville, we put a new restroom, faculty restroom in the lower level for stu-, uh, for teachers at Reville. They said, thank you, thank you. Because just, you just not having to walk from one end of the building to the other, up or down the floor to use the restroom, that is really a plus. Oh. Did you remember, GPS, when I heard we were gonna do this, I was kind of thinking, okay, they're gonna put like camera at the front of the bus, and it's gonna like, you know, the bus driver will be able to smile on the camera, and he'll be able to look all the kids back, going back in the bus, that's gonna be kind of it. No, actually what they got is there's one that's aimed at the bus driver, there's one at the front of the school, or excuse me, at the front of the bus, that's pointing, or wait, that's, that, the front view showing you what you're heading into, okay? Recording the driver, which is where I am the driver all the time, in the, in the bus, showing you what's going on in the bus, and what's going on behind the bus. Meanwhile, we've got, so that's four cameras, where's the...
There's one taking the picture down the, the, looking in down here. Okay. So those kids are getting off and on the bus.
Right, okay. Meanwhile, there's GPS technology that's telling us where the buses are at all times. My daughter, for the most part, I drove her to school virtually every day. It was good having the bus as a backup where if, you know, there's some kind of a work issue where I, I had to work, mom had to work, and dad did, and that. And so usually on the first day of school, she'd ride the bus just to, to get the idea of, okay, what bus are we gonna take? And where am I gonna go? And invariably, invariably, she would get on the wrong bus. And we would lose my daughter, and I would have to call Beth Gracer, the, uh, district's, the education specialist, they'd say, Beth, sorry, it's me again, yeah, happy to get this here, what have you done with my daughter? Give me five minutes, we'll find your daughter. And sure enough, she's totally on the wrong bus, or she got on the wrong bus, or she got off at the wrong stop. Now, we know where the buses are at all times, we've got a track. We're never gonna be a kid. That's our, that's actually kind of like the first part of our mission statement, was the joke. Okay, sorry. Okay, uh, we got new roofs at Tobias Moore Plains, Peter Ross, but I think also we got new roof, we got a beautiful new roof at, uh, Reville. We came in there, and again, one of the things that's nice about Reville, what we did at Reville is it's an old building, but we totally preserved the original character and heritage of the original architecture. The school is the same color, the main building is the same architecture, the roof is the same, it's got the same look. You know, it's not like we ripped out the school, we came in there with some kind of concrete and steel monstrosity, right? Boiler replacement ground, I, was this part of the, was this something that we discovered later, or was this something that we...
No, this was on the schedule, but the boiler there wasn't needed completely, so.
Yeah, so we took care of that, and drew. Okay, tech enhanced classrooms. Um, when we get done here, this summer, we basically did about a third of the schools, I think it was like three hundred and seventeen schools.
Third of the classrooms, yeah.
Third of the classrooms, third of the classrooms, sorry. It was like three hundred and seventeen out of a thousand classrooms, so, okay. With all of these benefits, CRT monitors, a mounted wireless digital projector, voice amplification. We learned that this is something that's really important. Kids need to be able to hear the teacher talk, and if we can amplify the teacher's voice, it just, it results in just enormous improvement. Academic results and so on. Uh, let's see. Let's see, where is X? It's right with the, there it is. Okay, the next. Some schools, some classrooms have whiteboards, some didn't. Now they're all gonna have, uh, a whiteboard and a document camera. So what the document camera does, and you take a doc, you take a document, you give a book, you can stick it into this old machine and boom, it projects it up onto a screen for the kids, so they can all see it. So here it looks like what the kids are doing is watching, um, board games with Matthew Broderick. Even possibly a social session, so. Oh, here we go. This is really exciting. This was something we decided to spend about twenty-three million dollars in, and I think we're like totally on budget, but we bought like four thousand six hundred and eighty student Chromebooks. Now what this is, what this little, these little, um, what do you call it? Carps are, is it's, they're charging you, so you take the, you take the Chromebook and you stick it in like that, and that's how they charge, right? So they're always charged and you can move them around. So students have Chromebooks, we also bought a bunch for, um, custodians, replaced a lot of teacher computers. So our children are going to have access to technology when we get done with this bond. Okay, some other things we added because there were problems we discovered and we realized in order to do what we promised to the bond, we needed to do these projects as well. In a way, Muberry, the water title was failing, we had limited to figure that. Eastwood Elementary School is one of these schools that does not have divided classrooms, it's kind of an open classroom thing. I went to a school like that when I was a kid, that was a really big thing back in the nineteen, oh, no, thirty-one, I was, but it was, that's when it set, it was right, just. The open school, and I guess maybe it's not everything we hoped, and so we decided to do is put walls between all of these classrooms in Eastwood Elementary. Again, this was a case, um, where the principal at Eastwood, Lindsay Garcia, has been really supportive because we haven't, we've got the walls up in place, but we don't actually have them finished, they're not quite finished, they're kind of there. And the kids are in the classrooms and they're working on trying to finish up those walls. So that's something we're doing. Um, we discovered this problem at Stagering at Hanover High School, under the stadium, over the stage. We took care of that, finished it. Um, we also, in addition to, um, turfing, uh, the softball field at Hanover High School, we are also gonna be putting in dugouts there. Look at the dugouts now, they kind of look okay from a distance, but I guarantee you, if you go up and really take a closer look, you're gonna find that it's like holes, or things that dry a lot, maybe. We're going to, uh, replace those, I think they're moving them slightly.
We're moving the varsity softball.
Varsity softball, okay. And we're still in the process of getting permits to do that, getting the approval to do that. Um, another parent on our committee that's been super helpful on this, Holly Robeson, we're gonna tell you about Holly Robeson. Last week, we're in a meeting of the, um, bond oversight committee. And she smiled, and she was very polite, and she was very calm, and she was very constructive, and she was very respectful. But she explained in no uncertain terms how we totally ruined her child's band season because we didn't finish the turf at Glencoe and it's screwing up the band's practice schedule. And this is something you would not know if we didn't have these great parents on this committee, okay? These parents that know what's going on at their kid's school, and they can tell me about it so we can do something about it. I believe, out of court, we went on, at that time, that project was scheduled to be done in about three days, so that problem should be well on its way to being basically solved, right? The field is great. Yeah. And everything will be just perfectly shipshape by softball season, which is perfect. Okay, digital to that. Next summer, like I said, I thought, I thought, you must have done at least a hundred million dollars, I don't know about that project this summer. No, you didn't, you didn't really, you didn't. Next summer unfolds when we're gonna be doing a lot of work, a hundred and...
We're gonna start two hundred million dollars worth of projects. Now, some of those, the Brookwood, um, Glencoe, Hill High, Evergreen expansions will go on for the entire school year. But we're gonna start two hundred million dollars worth of projects next summer, so it's gonna be, yeah, exciting.
And again, I've got a guy on the committee, a parent, Peter Brandon, who's a student at Brookwood. He's already talking to us about how, you know, we gotta find the, um, the, uh, the time capsule, there's a missing time capsule somewhere buried on the Brookwood campus that we gotta find and rebury. He is absolutely adamant that we save the sign, we're gonna save the sign, Brookwood's sign is gonna be preserved possibly inside the building, actually.
I don't know. It's gonna, it's gonna be...
So we're gonna be completely rebuilding, uh, Brookwood, parents not familiar with it, it's a, they call it Calhoun Open Enrollment School, but separate buildings, kids have to walk between buildings in the Oregon traffic, from one place to the other. Some of that is covered, some of it is not. But what we're basically gonna do is, we're gonna demolish that school in place, we're gonna build a new school where it plays.
We're gonna build a new school. We're gonna build a new school while the existing school is on renovation.
We're gonna build a new school, then we're going to, I thought there was a year that the kids were gonna build a different school.
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
We're gonna build a school, we're going to raise now, new school, brand new, could win the brand new school, uh, thirty-five million dollars.
Yep.
Uh, and move them into that, raise the old school, come in and then put in like, basically all the amenities you're gonna have in any one of our elementary schools, you have a playground, you have some turf field, you have some natural field, you've got a covered play area, and you're gonna have a whole new school out. I'm not sure whether we're gonna start on the little elementary school in North Plains, uh, this summer, I mean, next summer. That'll depend on some things.
Yep, that'll be a conversation that we'll be having with the school board here in the next couple of months, to determine if we're gonna start that building in North Plains. And right now, it's on the, the bond schedule for 2020 construction, uh, but we're gonna have the conversation. We'll, we'll be ready in terms of design and permits and everything to start in 2019, if we determine we need it for capacity.
The question is not asking ready, it's a question of, will there be enough kids, enough homes built there, enough kids to, to build? Okay, Hill High, uh, which is our oldest, uh, oldest high school, uh, is gonna be in the three mile model on CTE investment, has our, uh, which is all of our high schools, and, uh, Hill School. It's also gonna be, it's called CTE investment. That stands for, don't tell me, Adam. Continuing Technology Education?
Career Tech.
Career, okay, Career Technology Education puts career training, or it's training the trades, or, um, I think it's called SHOP. But if I use the word shop, that might be the closest thing to fitting what you're...
It's, yeah, it is something other than just a standard classroom, so it would be, it'd be...
And I can just jump ahead a little bit here. We're gonna be building a new satellite transportation maintenance facility, and, uh, this is on this list. Anyway, um, we've got a bus transportation facility now where it's stuck. We don't have an apartment for the, for the bus drivers' car, we don't have a parking for buses. The, uh, the bus drivers don't have a big, like lunchroom, break room, facilities for just coming in and like, you know, eating their, taking their breaks and doing what they gotta do when they're not actually driving the bus, right? So we're building another one over, excuse me, north of Liberty High School.
Jacobson Road.
On Jacobson Road. This is gonna be almost exactly, uh, on the other side of the district where the transportation facility is. And that means that the buses are only, if we put half the buses here and half the buses here, they only have to go half as far as they would before to get where they need to go, get the kids where they need to go, right? But what's really cool, and the reason I bring this up, is that this transportation facility, we got the idea, hey, we've got diesel buses at this transportation facility, why don't we put in a CTE lab there where kids can study diesel mechanics? So it'll be a facility there where students will be able to come over, come, come to that transportation facility and learn about diesel mechanics, work on actual lessons. Hold on a second, okay, skip down the list a little bit.
We'll be talking with the board over the next several months about, um, all of these projects. We'll be presenting, um, plans for, I think we're gonna start with the two, um, will be elementary schools, the Brookwood Elementary School design. Uh, that'll be one meeting, we'll do another one where we'll present information on the new high school remodeling edition, Evergreen, White and Brown, um, edition, so.
Um, and like, okay, so a lot of these, um, on these, oh, here we go, this is one we're gonna talk about here. On a lot of these schools, in addition to new modular classrooms to replace some of the worst portables we have in the district, I mean, there's like one dream I would have for the most worst district, is we take all of the portables and just junk them. And fortunately, with this bond measure, we're not gonna be able to junk all of them, but we're at least gonna be able to junk the worst ones and replace them with these new modular classrooms. In addition, many of the elementary schools do not have a cafeteria and a gym. They have a cafagymatorium, we call it, and this is not a word you will find in any dictionary, American Heritage, it does not have that, it's not there.
My dictionary.
Uh, where they eat part of the time and they have P E part of the time. The problem is they can't do that both at the same time. And I believe that the federal government's coming up with more, um, ambitious, uh, physical education guidelines that will require children basically to have more P E. So we're gonna be able, we are going to need to amazing facilities where it's dedicated pretty much to being a gym. And we're gonna have the cafeterias that are pretty much devoted to serving and eating food. So, at, for example, Eastwood, they're gonna get a new gym, Muberry, they're gonna get a new gym. On top of that, all of these new gyms, because of some of the, uh, extra money we got with the bond agreement, which happens, I believe.
Um, not in detail, I'll go into the budget stuff.
Oh, that's right, that's it, that's it, that's it. Anyway, what we decided to do is to build these new gyms, we are gonna build all of these new gyms to the, uh, what they call the meeting occupancy seismic standard. Which means, normally what we do when we're doing a seismic upgrade, we sometimes only have enough money to just make sure the buildings are good enough. If an earthquake hits, the kids have got time to get out of the building before the whole thing falls down, okay? It doesn't mean, oh, earthquake, everybody, everybody, uh, goes outside, don't say that, everybody goes outside, you know? And then the drill's over, we all go back in the building. Unfortunately, earthquakes don't work that way. It may be the school is not in the best conditions for the kids to go back in, but on these new gyms, the reason I bring this up is on these new gyms, we're going to enter that immediate occupancy standard, which means when the earthquake's over, you'll be able to go back into the, um, gym. And that will be, can even be used as a community earthquake shelter. I don't wanna strike a candle, but I do wanna tell you that as statistically perhaps unlikely as it is that we're gonna have an earthquake, if it happens, it is going to change the way we live in ways we cannot begin to imagine. You may have earthquake insurance, I have that earthquake insurance. The problem is, a lot of people have earthquake insurance, and they're gonna have to pay all of us. And society may not be running quite the way it's running now in terms of, it's just gonna be a very emergency situation. So having places like this that we can use as shelters for members of our community is gonna be a real plus. And one commitment I made myself, and I got involved with, you know, facilities plan and bond committees and all this other stuff. And this was a commitment shared thankfully by everybody in this whole school district, Adam, and everybody that has been involved with this, and that when kids come to school, I just don't want anything to happen to them, okay? If ten years from now, there's an earthquake... If 10 years from now, there's an earthquake and some kid gets hurt because I didn't do this seismic, I didn't have this seismic burden at this school and they got hurt, I'd not commit to look at myself in the mirror tomorrow. Okay? So that's why it's so important that we have stuff like this and that student safety, student security has always been the number one priority in all these projects.
Not for a little bit, John? Yes. Sorry. I almost... Oh, there it is. All right, so I'm going to tape this part.
Yes.
So just a reminder, when we passed the bond, we passed it for 408 million dollars. When we sold the first round of bonds, we made, we received a premium on those bonds, 51.6 million dollars, which means instead of having to sell 320 million dollars worth of bonds, we only had to sell 280 million dollars worth of bond, 70 million dollars worth of bond. So we have those additional money. That has been a Godsend for us because it's allowed us to do some things that we might not otherwise have been able to do. In addition to the 51.6 million that we got for the bond premium, we received a $6 million state matching grant through their awesome program. In addition to that, we're anticipating about $10 million in interest, bond interest. So we've been talking with the board about how, how we manage those additional dollars. And what we have come up with is three different pots of additional funding. Bond contingency A, which is for unanticipated, unforeseen conditions, added scope. When we look at what we ended up doing at Rebuild, we added a lot of scope to that project. We, some of what we had to do, we had to make some past street improvements that we weren't anticipating. We had to put an elevator in the building, which we wouldn't anticipate.
Thank you, Senator, yes. This is because to be ADA compliant, we needed that elevator. We also had to do two ramps that we had to remodel. Here's the feeling that I kind of had about the whole rebuild project is we went in there and it's, again, one of the oldest schools in the district, if not the oldest school in the district, and we discovered a bunch of stuff that just needed to be done. And my feeling was, and again, this was supported by the Hillsborough School District, is we're doing this now. Anything we don't do now, we are not going to do for another 10 or 11 years. If something needs to be done, now's the time to do it, even if we have to dig into our, some other pot of money to make it happen.
Yep. So what you'll see is that over this summer, we spent about four, almost $5 million of our bond contingency A. The big majority of that was at Rebuild. We also allocated some additional dollars to next summer's projects. So of that 32.8 million dollars that we started with, we've spent almost seven million of. So we're just short of 26 million. Bond contingency B is there just for cost escalation. This is the hottest construction market that anybody that I have been working with has ever seen. There's, right now, there's about $3 billion worth of school construction projects happening in the state of Oregon. There's $5 billion happening within here in Northern Washington. There's just so much activity, which means that it's very difficult to come up with contractors and subcontractors. So we are protected and able to do all the stuff that we have on our, on our list because we have that 26.8 million dollars to protect us against cost escalation. We've only spent a million and a quarter of that, so we've still got 25 and a half million dollars there. Bond contingency C is money that we've allocated for things that have come up since the bond promise was made. It's a total of $8 million, and this allows us to do the things that you saw on the list, including the, the stage rigging at Glencoe, the floors at Glencoe, and Mooberry, those types of projects. So, and of that 8 million, we've spent just short of 2 million. So in total, grand total, we started out with 67.6 million dollars in additional funds beyond the 408 million. We spent just right at 10 million and we just got it. That will allow us to fulfill the promises that we made as part of the bond and hopefully do some, some of those other things that were on our big bond list that didn't make it into the final 400 million dollar bond.
Adam, which of these contingencies events has the money where we paid a little bit extra to make sure we've got the workers getting their work done on time, the teachers for the gap in due...
Yeah. In the, the full report that I sent you, I've broken down contingencies into several different categories, including, we call it scheduled adherence. So we have to pay overtime to get a project done. All right. Challenges, I just talked about. We've got a very hot market right now. We're doing the things we can to mitigate that. We are trying to get out there and bid all of our projects as early as we can in the process so that we get people on board before they commit to some other project. We're doing a lot of outreach to contractors to try to get them on board. So, all right. That's our first annual report. Actually, what we're planning on doing is doing two of these reports to the board. One, this time of year after the construction season, another one next spring as we move into the construction season.
So we'll give you a preview of what's coming up, what we're doing, what the logistical challenges may be, and then when we're all done, come back and tell you how.
Yep. And then beyond that, Bill, continue to get all of the monthly reports that we do and all the materials.
Fantastic. Okay, we do have a couple of questions and comments, which I know we're going to keep a little bit brief so that we can fulfill our promise to our student representatives and get them out here on time. So we'll start with Mark and then go to Jack.
Uh, yeah, you, you mentioned that we started rebuild late, and I see a $300,000 charge for scheduled adherence to get us done on time. So I'm trying to find a way to phrase the question that's not snarky.
Well, wasn't it done on time?
Yeah, we spent 300 grand extra and we still didn't make it. Is there information as to what happened?
It was done more on time than it would have been if we had paid the money to do the scheduled adherence.
The, the $300,000 scheduled adherence was primarily on the modular building. We had, we were there, we were there. Our contractors were onsite. They were working double shifts, they were working seven days a week.
So that's...
For basically all of July and August.
And although we started two days late, the kitchen, is the kitchen, you don't open yet now?
Nope. Kitchen will be open late October. And that is just a function of getting the equipment in and getting all of your, this state comes in and does all the permitting on the kitchen.
And Adam, you couldn't have been wrong. We knew going, we were not going to get that...
The kitchen was never going to be...
That was just not even part of the plan.
So we, the, the plan has been to bring lunches in from Tobias. That's what we're doing for.
Yep.
The other question I have is the 1.7 million for the CTE addition at the transportation facility. One, that's a big number, and two, maybe I'm, my recollection isn't as great, but I thought that was always part of it, that we were going to have this CTE capability at that transportation facility. At what point did that become something new and must have been very early?
It was very early. It was in, gosh, March, April, when we started costing out the, the facility. And this is a very expensive CTE program because of the equipment that's required and the new classroom that's required in the new building.
We probably have to go back and look at the best, as my memory, because something like Adam says, it was like the first meeting we had, it was a...
So the original plan didn't call for us to do CTE in that building? Not, not have a dedicated space for CTE in that building. The original pledge did not.
Okay. Jack? So just a couple of questions. Eastwood, we're still building the walls and the kids are there, and W L Henry, the modulars are ready. So how's that, I mean, I understand that the kids at W L Henry aren't in the old portables and Eastwood, the kids are still there while they're building the walls?
The walls are there.
How's, oh, okay, okay.
The walls were up and complete to the point that we could complete them without the city coming in and doing all their electrical permitting. So the walls are there, they're functioning as walls.
Oh, good, good.
They just aren't finished.
Oh, okay.
I mean, finished as in sheet rock and all that.
Okay. And the extra scope for the Glencoe turf, that was a million of a budget. And I, I tried to, to find the explanation for that, and I know that we got a donation from the Hops.
We got part of it, also donation from the Hops.
Okay.
The rest of it was, it was basically the square footage that we had to, we ended up with the size of a 90,000 square foot space in the front of that building, which did almost up to the baseball field that we're now using as the Hops field. When the Hops field came in, it left us with kind of a corner over here that was, wasn't going to get any turf or, I mean, grass. So that was just a way to complete the entire footage.
Got it. Great, thank you very much for your presentation. It was wonderful. Mark?
Sorry. Looking at the details of the board, it doesn't seem far off to say that in general, everything's more, right?
Everything's more.
Everything's more. How, how is the confidence level that the contingency covers us for the rest of life of this bond that with everything being more, we're not going to run out of money before we get it all done?
I'm feeling positive. Part of it is, as we mentioned, we're, we're starting 200 million dollars worth of stuff next year. That means we're going to be bidding all of those projects by February or March of this year. So we will know by the, by spring break what the cost of those projects is going to be for 250 million of our 400 million dollar bond.
Right, the biggest chunk at once.
The biggest chunk.
And if you do your plan, it's even more.
Correct, correct. So we'll have a very good idea at that point of what those construction budgets are going to be for those big projects, and we'll have a good idea at that point of how much of this contingency we're going to have to use.
And I know based on timing, we had to do it in two chunks. Sell the bonds in two...
Oh, right, yes.
We didn't sell them all on one. We had to go back and do a second half of the bond market.
Correct.
And what, if we do North Plains, does that put us at the point where we have to go for the second half sooner than we expected?
It may. Well, it's a cash flow equation at that point. Right now, we're planning on selling those bonds in June of 2020. We could go earlier, there's nothing that says we can't. We just, once we sell them, we have 36 months. It's been 82% of the proceeds, so that's, that's the trigger. And we'll, we'll just have to track that as we go.
Mike wanted to respond to that.
So, Adam, I was going to have you talk about our, our conversation with Rick, and I'll do my best, Adam, and you can chime in. Basically, our construction management firm has indicated that as he consults with the other districts that he currently is working for, and as he talks to other people in the region who are having this type of work done, their projects are not coming in on budget at this point with the amount of work that's out there and the shortage of labor. It's, it's fortunate that we do have these contingency dollars. And we talk about this every Thursday of, you know, are we going to use these contingency dollars, how are we going to meter them out? And our belief is that we will be okay, but we're going to have to be careful with it because we know that things are coming in over budget from when everything was priced out originally. And that's, that's not just a Hillsborough issue, that's a regional issue as well.
It's a national issue. Yeah, you're exactly right. And what this allows us to do, what the contingency allows us to do, is to make those decisions. But if we didn't have them, the decision would be what are we not going to do or how are we not going to, how are we not going to fulfill the promise that we made?
Yeah, well, it's just a little now, you're having to tell somebody you're not going to get air conditioning because we ran out of money.
Mark, and I would just add to, to this conversation is we, we initially budgeted for a lot of these projects in preparation to go out for a bond, so maybe like starting in 2015. And since then, with the escalation that's hit us, we got to the point where we are this summer, but we've accounted for that moving forward and how we're saving pricing and budgeting for more up to date in the market to be more, we should be much more accurate moving forward than we were initially with the market. That makes any sense?
Right. And I understand all that, financial news is something I read a lot, I get it, but the, I mean, but when we ran for the job, I think all of us were told at the outset, it's a thankless job because you get nothing for it and you're being entrusted with people's money and their kids. And it's the two most important things. So I, I really want to make sure we don't fall down on the trust of their money.
And that's really the, the intent of the Citizen Bond Oversight Committee is to make sure that we're staying on those budgets and on those schedules.
Well, we're not staying on those budgets. Nobody is.
Well, we're staying within, we're going to do everything we promised to do with the funds that we have available.
Maybe the other thing to remember is that with those contingency dollars and with the bond interest and with the bond premium that we're garnering along the way that we already have collected, our original plan was this whole list of projects. And one of the reasons we held off on doing any of those now is for this very reason. We wanted to make sure that we were able to fulfill the promise we made to the community on the original bond projects. So I, I do believe that we're able to fulfill that promise. I'm not as certain that we're going to be able to do those extra projects, but likely not.
But if, that's comforting to know, but we are doing extra stuff ready. We already did a bunch of extra turf, so we're doing some extra stuff.
Thank you. Some extra stuff. As we go through these projects, Rebuild's a prime example. We, we chose to do things at Rebuild that weren't necessarily part of the original scope, but they were the right thing to do. And we'll continue to be looking at those kinds of decisions, especially in our older buildings. The, the older middle schools, the Browns, the Pointers, our older elementary schools, West Union is coming up next summer. So we'll continue to have to make those decisions.
Yeah, and as I recall, we moved out to rebuild, and they showed what they were talking about. They ripped open the walls, they were doing the seismic upgrade work, and they just suddenly discovered, we're going to have to do a lot more to attach these walls to this foundation to make sure something doesn't happen in case of earthquake. And it was just more than what we thought was there. We couldn't know because we hadn't taken the walls off.
And we had, we basically replaced the whole sewer system there, the whole domestic fire line, all the stuff. Yeah. So the, the bones of that, that building are now new. It's going to last another hundred years.
Sam had a comment or question?
I know that Peter Bosco used to be a school, but then it wasn't anymore. I wanted to know if it's going to be a school again or if it already is because in the presentation, it said that they've said and replaced roofing at Peter Bosco.
So, and this was a little before my time, but Peter Bosco was an elementary school. We took off most of the classroom wings from that building. So what's remaining is kind of the administration area, couple of classrooms, I think what must have been the whole library maybe, and then the gym. So there's no plans to do anything more than we're currently doing. Right now, Hillsborough Online is located there. But, and then we, we offer programs out of the gym.
There's a box handle.
There's a box program.
There's also the transitions program there. Some special education services in Hillsborough Online located at the old Peter Bosco.
But beyond that, we don't have any big plans for adding capacity to that.
Just to follow on on what Mark said about the other projects that were not part of the bond promise, a lot of them in the spreadsheet said maintenance 2018. The total, the total amount was about 1.4 million dollars. Is that, was that deferred maintenance? Was that...
Those were projects that came up after we put the bond package together.
Okay.
So there were things that came up that met the criteria for the bond.
Right.
It, it met the criteria of what the voter said we could spend the bond dollars on.
Okay.
That just weren't included in the original package because we didn't know that it needed to be done.
Excellent. All right, thank you very much, Matt, and I really appreciate your presentation, your information. Thank you. Okay, we're the power crew now, and we're going to end on time. That's what's going to happen. So, Mike, we met super tenets goals, so we're ready.
I'm ready. So I don't think I need to repeat the goals that are listed in the strategic plan. Basically, one of my major goal for the year, as always, is to fulfill the, the work that we've outlined in the strategic plan for the 2018, '19 school year. In addition to that, I will see four other goals that I've set for myself, and that is based on two different things on me and as well as the areas that are outlined in my evaluation each year. So the first one is provide professional development to board members so they have, so they make great decisions. That's the first one. The second one is influence, and that's to use my position and my influence throughout the state in a, in a greater way than has been done in the past. I've been making great strides on that. I'm, I'm on the board of OSAA, on the executive board for COSA and United Way. I've already had... Already had the opportunity to advocate with the governor a couple of different times. And that's, that last week when I met with Eric, my request was for forty million dollars. So we'll see how that works out. And specifically, I'm wanting to go towards diversifying the workforce and not just in our own school district, but to do that regionally and statewide. And we feel like we've got a great model and a great pathway for that that can be replicated throughout the state. And then my final goal is to continue to advocate with legislators. This promises to be an exciting, exciting legislative session with, I think, a lot of unrest as we go through the process. And just being clear and deliberate with the, with the legislators is going to be helpful. And that's a commitment that you share as well. So those are the goals that I've set for this upcoming year.
Thank you very much, Mike. Are there any questions or comments for Mike?
Can we just give a thumbs up?
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, excellent. We're now at item four, financial report with Michelle. She put a very thorough report in her packet starting at page thirty-nine. Are there any questions or comments for Michelle? Is there anything that you want to highlight for us, Michelle?
Oh, the bullpen.
I asked an answer, I'm really happy.
Just, just a note that the financial, the cash flow goes through the end of August, which is before we have our first bullpen year. So it's just not a whole lot of meat yet, but looking forward to sharing my stuff with you guys.
Wonderful. We really appreciate all the detail that goes into that report, so. Okay, we are now at item G, our consent agenda, so I'm ready to hear a motion.
Moved to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved by Kim and seconded by Martin to approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? I don't see any. So it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Martin to approve the consent agenda as printed. If you would like to approve that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no.
Yes.
Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Excellent. So we are now at item, or yes, item H, action items. And we're going to start with appointing Citizens' Curriculum and Advisory Committee members with Travis. We have the names from upstairs. Travis, do you want to share anything else with us or are we ready for a motion on page ninety-eight?
We are ready for a motion. And just for the record, we'll keep the application process open through Val and Jonathan Sanchez and myself so that folks can continue to apply. So I'll defer to you, Lisa.
Excellent. Okay, so we do have a little bit of scrolling to get there, but you can find a motion on page ninety-eight.
I move that the Board of Directors appoint the slate of candidates identified during this week evening's work session to the open positions on the CCAC as follows. Appointing following candidates to the CCAC two-year positions, Chris Adisma, Alan Rodrigo, Aguilar Vargas, Patrick McGuire. Appoint the following candidates to the two-year student positions, Lizzie Boog, Wendy Romelli, and Cheverria Garcia.
Excellent. Is there a second?
Okay.
So it has been moved by Erica and seconded by Jackie to appoint that slate of candidates. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'm at C E D, so Erica has made a motion, Jackie has seconded. The Board of Directors appoint the slate of candidates identified during the evening's work session upstairs to the open positions on the CCAC. If you would like to approve that slate of candidates, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, appointing the audit committee with Michelle.
Yes, I'm encouraged. Anyone who's interested in joining the audit committee is a great chance to review the financial position and activities of the district throughout the year. There's an opportunity to meet with our independent auditors and ask them about the financial report that we developed and also kind of review the process and ask them questions about the testing that they do when they're here with us and how they support us throughout the year.
So as you all might recall, we did discuss this at our retreat back in August. And generally, traditionally, the newest board member served on the audit committee, which would be Vera. And then I believe it was someone who said they were interested in also doing that, Martin and Erica. So if you were interested in making the motion to appoint board members, you would probably be moving to appoint Erica Martin and Yudira to that committee.
I move that we appoint Erica Lopez, Yudira Martinez, and Martin Granham to the audit committee.
Second.
Do they have to like accept? Do they have to like agree or can we just?
We would want to ask them if they will accept.
Do you guys accept your nomination?
I accept.
Okay. Right, that's the right answer. Okay, so Jackie has made the motion and Kim has seconded the motion that we appoint Yudira Martinez, Martin Granham, and Erica Lopez to the audit committee. If you would like to appoint those board members, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, congratulations. So exciting. Okay, and then Michelle, you are also up next. We are at item three under action items.
Well, as Adam mentioned earlier, we applied for the SUC, the awesome matching grant from the Department of Education, an amount of six million dollars. It is neatly targeted to items of work covered underneath the title of bond promise. And Adam handled on-creed. It is part of the spending plan, so we need official approval of a resolution tonight to forward the grant.
Excellent. So I'm ready to hear the motion about the awesome grant on page one hundred and one.
I move that the Board of Directors accept the OSCIM grant award in the amount of six million dollars and authorize the district's chief financial officer to execute the OSCIM grant agreement in substantially the form attached to the resolution.
Second. It's been moved by Mark and seconded by Kim that we accept the grant. Are there any questions for Michelle or comments? Okay, it has been moved by Mark and seconded by Kim that the Board of Directors accept the awesome grant award in the amount of six million dollars and authorize, that's how she said it. So it's been moved by Mark and seconded by Kim that the Board of Directors accept the awesome grant award in the amount of six million dollars and authorize the district's chief financial officer to execute the awesome grant agreement in substantially the form attached to the resolution. If you would like to approve that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. That motion passes. Thank you. I'm going to be passing around, down, while as we're getting near the end, our working agreement for everyone to sign by the lady for support. So when it gets to you, please do sign it. This was adopted as a consent agenda. Thank you all. Okay, we are now at action item number four with Adam.
Yay. So earlier this summer, the board authorized us to find CMGC contractors for several of our upcoming 2019 projects. We had solicitation for that, and we ended up with four contractors who responded. And what we decided to do is award those, all four of those contractors, projects. So you can see that LCG tents, we're recommending to award the high school projects, Evergreen Middle School projects, we're proposing to go to P and C Construction, inline construction, affirmative, the Rebuild project, we're proposing to award the Muberry Elementary Renovation Gym Portable Classroom Project. And then Five Star Builders, another contractor that we worked with, local contractor that we worked with this summer, we would recommend award the Eastwood Renovation Gym Portable Classroom Project. Kim was involved in the interviews. I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add, but.
Super exciting work. It's, it's a good committee to sit on.
We felt really fortunate. We were hearing horror stories about folks who were getting either no responses or very few responses, and this is really critical to us getting out in front of these projects, trying to get out in front of the market. So we're feeling really good about these particular contractors that have been out on board this, this early in the process.
And that was part of that piece about how you adequately project what it's going to cost and kind of get ahead of it, starting this early and hearing from each of these vendors about their process to align all their subcontractors and all the work now for next summer and how that should potentially help us be really cost-effective because they're so far ahead of it and because they each have their own pools of subcontractors and partnerships already in the community. They felt really good about being able to bid the work and do it on time, which was exciting to hear. Would you entertain a motion?
I would, I'm ready.
Yes. I move that the Board of Directors award the contract for construction management general contractor services as follows. Glencoe High School addition renovation, Hillsborough High School renovation, and Miller Big Picture renovation to LCG tents. Evergreen Middle School addition renovation, Brown Middle School renovation, and Pointer Middle School renovation to P and C Construction. Muberry Elementary School renovation of gym portable classroom replacement to inline construction. And Eastwood renovation gym portable classroom replacement to five-star builders.
Second.
So it has been moved by Kim, and I heard Erica first, seconded by Erica, that we award these contracts. Before we vote on that motion, is there any discussion or are there any questions? All right then. So it has been moved by Kim and seconded by Erica that the Board of Directors award the contract for construction management general contractor services as follows. Glencoe High School addition renovation, Hillsborough High School renovation, and Miller Big Picture renovation to LCG tents. Evergreen Middle School addition renovation, Brown Middle School renovation, and Pointer Middle School renovation to P and C Construction. Muberry Elementary School renovation, gym portable classroom replacement to inline construction. Eastwood renovation gym portable classroom replacement to five-star builders. If you would like to approve that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. That motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, excellent job, everyone. All right, we would now love to warmly welcome our H E A and H C U representatives, and we would love to hear from them. Do you want to sign this? Do you want to have students just sign with me for a minute?
Sure.
If they want to, they can actually vote on it, so if we feel comfortable, they can sign it. They don't have to.
All right, you ready for me?
We're ready.
Okay, hi. So to the, our newest board member, his name is Adam, the president of Hillsborough Classified United, which is the non-instructional staff meeting. So bus drivers, custodians, office staff, you know, education assistants, all those folks, media assistants, all the folks that aren't teaching you in a classroom and doing all of your assessments and communicating, that's who we, that's who I represent. And I come to the board basically saying, we're really excited to have students back because the best time of our year is around September to June when we're working with kids. Because even though education changes every day, the kind of day-to-day activity is sort of consistent. We get into the groove of expanding children's minds, of helping them get their stuff taken care of. And every day we have challenges to overcome, but at the end of the day, we all done, like we all come to Hillsborough School District as employees to help kids. So the summer work that we do where we're cleaning buildings and grant to be figuring out how we're going to route kids, every kid that is now showing up to make sure all of our schedules are set and that everything is ready to go, it's interesting work, but it's not the fun work. Fun work is working with the kids. And it's difficult with what we're facing right now because we have a bus driver shortage. I don't know, I'm not sure what the current count is, but it's somewhere in the twenties of vacant bus driver positions. So if you know someone who's unemployed and wants to drive a bus, Carol, help her, yeah, help field over transportation wants to talk to you about driving a bus. It's a great job. You get to meet kids all day and it's, you know, we're working on the wages side so we can compete with Beaver Tins. So it's, you know, her benefits are a little better, you know, there's a little bit difference between everything. But with the driver shortage, one of the things that we have to be mindful, and we have, that we can't really, that I can't really control today or staff managers can't really control is wages, benefits, because that's through the contract, through the contract negotiation process, right? Staff retention, that's all about school culture. That's all about the climate, it's all about employee respect, it's all about how our staff treat each other. Because when I talk to people who leave our district, it's usually for two reasons. It's either there's some sort of medical issue, they're getting old, they're retiring, they got hurt, they're not able to work anymore. The other is that they're just fed up with the situation that they have at work, that they don't feel respected, they don't feel heard, they don't feel like they're getting what they need. It's the principal who doesn't recognize that media assistants aren't licensed staff. They're classified staff. Their jobs are completely different. Their structure is completely different. It's the custodian who says, you can't take vacation during the school year because we don't have subs. And then when summer comes around, you can't take vacation because we have summer projects to do. It's, you know, it's people being asked to give and give and give to this district and not be recognized for their work. And it's that kind of stuff that principals and administrators can change. It's valuing and respecting our employees, giving them what they need, giving them the guidance that they need to be successful, making sure that they have the training and tools necessary will keep those people here. I, if I could say one thing to principals, that when a staff comes to you to complain, do something about it. And that makes all the difference in the world for a classified staff. So I'm really hopeful that this year is going to be a great year, that we're going to solve our transportation shortage, that we're going to have, every position's going to be full. We're going to have a great year, and our kids are going to have a great educational experience in one of the best districts in the state. Thank you.
Yay. Solve our five minutes, though, I think.
Sorry.
No, I'm kidding. Jill Le, I am the president of the Teachers Association, the Hillsborough Educational Association, so welcome, girls. And I know I have two exec board members here, Joe Grum, which is my vice president, and Ginny Underhill, the secretary. And I know Ms. Underhill is a student or a teacher of mine from my school. She was very excited to see me sitting here tonight, and I'm glad she was able to come and welcome. Very excited. We have been very busy as well. We have been working and going out to all the buildings, and I'm proud to say that we have ninety-eight percent membership, which is a really big deal because we had to get twelve hundred members to agree and sign up and say, yes, I want to be a member again of our union. So we are, we are very strong and I'm very proud of our strength, and I feel like that is going to help us move forward and be very successful and help the district be successful as well. And secondly, I'm going to keep it short because I know that you do need to go home and start a day tomorrow, but we've done something really exciting. The National Education Association has a grant opportunity, and Patrick Berkeley and I worked to apply for the grant, and we received a fifteen thousand dollar grant under the Essa, Every Student Succeeds Act. It's called My School, My Voice. We will be sharing much more about that with you folks. But basically, the grant will, the purpose of the grant is to build understanding and facilitate implementation of the My School, My Voice checklist. And it's an opportunity indicator for the Hillsborough Education Association and Hillsborough School District stakeholders. And so we started with the exec board, and the exec board took the My School, My Voice, it's called like a dashboard checklist. And then the building reps had an opportunity last week, and then we're going to continue to roll that out. And we really want to hear from all the community as well, and I think it'll help really have us have a focus on the Every Student Succeeds Act, and we can work collaboratively together and work on something pretty amazing. And so very excited about that. And thank you for everything you do, and we'll see you next month.
Okay, so Jessica and Samantha, now we're at the point where we talk upstairs to student representatives time. So if there, this would be the time for you to share anything that you might feel interested in sharing, and as I say, you all speak your pants. But we would love to hear who you are. Start with Jessica and then Samantha.
We put on the spot first.
It's going to happen every time because we always start down there. So now, now we're here.
I kind of wanted to talk to you guys who had just come up here. You guys, you said you worked with the media people. Does that include people in the library and the tech kind of side of it? Or what do you think?
You can answer, it's okay. We're, we're getting warmed up. Normally, we don't back and forth, but it's, it's, we're a little relaxed, it's okay.
Okay, so yeah, so media assistants, that's classified staff.
What do you think, Samantha? Samantha?
I guess I'll just share some things that's been going on at school. I'm in this class, it's called Citizen Community Services, and we're going to do a field trip, and we're having the same problem of shortage of bus drivers. And we were trying to get that figured out, coming up with ways to get a bus. And something new at Liberty that we're doing this year that we didn't do all the other years is the school ideas. I'm pretty sure that in other high schools in Hillsborough, they did that, but in Liberty they had it, and they just did that this year. And a bunch of students didn't like the idea. And at first, I didn't like it either, but now I'm indifferent about it. I understand like why they did it, like the safety, and like for people, like kids who are into trouble and in the middle of the hallways and then they leave, and this is teachers, they don't know what their names are. I understand. I understand. And then, yeah, I understand that. So I'm like, okay with it. And also something, last year they said that we're going to do advisory, but they didn't really do it much. I know it was like all bad, but this year they're doing better with advisory. They're going to do either an advisory or an assembly every Friday. And we've been doing that. And we had an assembly. It was a Spanish hair team assembly. And I really liked it. They did like a presentation. It was like an I am from poem. And they also did kind of like, like a quinceañera type of thing, like to show how girls become women. And they did an assembly, but.
Thank you. Okay, now it is super tense time.
I will be brief as well. Welcome to our student reps. Happy to have you here. I think it adds a great element to our meeting. Also would like to give the carpenters some recognition. This building is 18 years old and the fact that they can come that close to matching it, I think is very impressive. So thanks to them. I've enjoyed my visits out to North Plains and Midbury and visiting classrooms. That's been a great time. Just a reminder that on Wednesday, we do have the ribbon cutting for Hill Hollis. Send me more information tomorrow. And finally, I'd like to welcome one of our newest teachers to the Hillsborough School District, Wayne Cliff, who is sitting in the audience because. Hope you enjoyed your first couple weeks.
He's here. He might be trying to, he's like, wait a second.
I was checking approving the personnel routine virtual house.
Wonderful. Okay, board of directors, time to start. See, I do it to everybody.
Should we start today?
I'm still here.
Welcome, you guys. This is great. I'm really excited to see what we have to offer and convert it to a board. That'll be great. I don't really have a lot, but I do have to say that every time I come in, I sit here and I see all of the banners for the schools, it just, it makes me smile. Just the thought that the kids did it and it represents every school in our district. I love it. That's all.
Shout out to everybody who made it to the end. And it's so great to see you, Wayne. It really is truly great. And Matt, I really appreciate your enthusiasm. You personify the enthusiasm that we, I think, as the board and district had for, you know, reaching, engaging with the community on this bond. So we're kind of passing the baton to the execution team, to Adam and his superstars and you on the bond oversight committee. Keep going. And I would just like to add, I live in unincorporated Washington County. It's fully urbanized, been fully urbanized since the 60s. It's not covered by any park. And the entire attendance area of Butter Nut Creek Elementary School, the only public playground is the playground that they just built or rebuilt. And so now I used to take my daughter and now I take my granddaughter down to that fabulous play area at Butter Nut Creek Elementary School. So thank you. Thank you to the community for supporting the bond.
Also, welcome to the district representatives. It's been a long time coming and it's just exciting to see that happen. I'm also just excited about the bond work and thankful for the whole team at facilities and construction management. It is so much work and it's so fun to go over there for a meeting and to see the place abuzz. And there's nowhere to park because there's so many people coming and going and interacting. And I'm just so excited about it. This was my first year in a really, really long time that I did not have a student enter kindergarten or school grade in Hillsborough School District and take that first day photo. And so I'm loving being here and hearing from students and staff about all those things that are happening because I'm not getting quite as direct as I have the last 18 years and stuff. Proud to be HSD.
I agree with you, Jackie, on the banners. Weirdly, from my perspective, out of my peripheral vision, the Eastwood one makes it look like Wayne's going. All day, it's my peripheral way. But yes, just want to thank HSF for everything you guys do in the, in the district. And thanks for the presentation again today. And just recommend, I don't know how you get invited to participate, and I don't know we're invited. If you ever get a chance to participate in the surprise patrol where they go on site at our schools and award the grants to the teachers that wrote them, it's a tremendously rewarding experience. If you get a chance to do it, go with because it's just so much fun to see the teacher light up and like, oh wait, we got it. So yeah, it's awesome. Shout out to our communications team for giving us these great opportunities to participate in the community. I met a couple other elected officials sort of praise all of us by how visible we've been in the community. And it's really, the credit doesn't really belong to us. It's, you know, you got the, the tennis court party in the park was amazing. I don't know who came up with the idea to make those harmonicas, but. Super, sorry, yeah. Oh, man, that was just fantastic. It's often difficult to sort of, be in the moment as much as possible, not be thinking about the mortgage payment, wherever going to dinner and all the other things that affect our life. But for some reason, in the couple hours I spent with those kids, we basically took emery boards or like tongue depressors and put rubber bands around them and a piece of paper and you blow into it and it goes. And when you put it together, you're like, there's no way this is going to work. And every single kid blows it and it's like. It was, it was. And Gordon, too. And temptation, absolutely. Like, I never thought mine was going to work. So it really gave us a great opportunity to, one, participate in the community and just like lose ourselves in the moment with those kids. It was fantastic. I thank you guys for your reports tonight. Wanted to update you guys that we are still under collective bargaining with, I know I classified, you know, I think the teachers are still in process as well. So, you know, our school year began with the classified union not having an agreement in place. So everybody was, whatever the, you know, annual increase of a contract was to be expected, they did not get that in September and it creates some more sense of urgency. So we're working hard to get that done. So just letting you guys know that. I feel like we're getting closer. Michelle presented the financials at our last collective bargaining agreement meeting. And I believe we have one Friday, right? Right, so we're meeting then Friday. So we're turning up the heat, trying to get that done to make sure everybody has something to look forward to in their next paychecks, I guess. The last thing is, you know, Mike sends us updates time from time to time about various pieces of information. And one of the most recent ones was how we are moving staff to accommodate different classes. And it's just heartbreaking to see kindergarten classes of 35. And just a reminder that it's preaching the choir, but maybe somebody who watched the video can get this far. Just, you know, beyond your state legislatures to do something about it. Hopefully, both sides of the aisle can agree that what we're doing right now isn't working and we have to do something. If we at least find some point of agreement upon which we can build, that maybe gets us to a solution. So get out there and bother your state representatives and senators to tell them to get it done.
I'll keep my shorts. I love these students. It was great to hear the I am a part of the foundation. First time I heard it, so I know a lot of kids that have benefited from the projects that you guys funded, so that's great. And my other question is, do we have like a classified staff appreciation day?
We.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll mark it on my calendar.
I'll get the information.
Welcome to the students. I think that this is going to add a great dynamic to our board, especially for you to see how the policies and the work that we do triples down into your schools and getting your input would be great for us as well. So we're very happy that you're here. And I think I'm going to keep it short so we can get out of here in time.
Okay, my last is long, but I have three minutes and I can do it. Okay, so Kim had her last first day of school last year and I had, her last last day of school. And I had my last first day of school, first first day of school. Whatever for my daughter, who's a caregiver. And so there's no more, no more very first days of school for us anymore. And so she's basically ready to graduate. She's very excited. And then I also got somehow signed up to be her soccer coach, which is a good time. And so there's also seven other kindergarten girls who I'm becoming BFFs with who are also very excited about kindergarten and are learning all the things that there are to know about the world. So it's a lot of every day and they're so excited. So it's, that is very, it's inspiring to get to see how, how happy they still are hours after they leave the school building. And then I just, I wanted to say wow to Jill, she said 98% of licensed staff have voluntarily agreed to do a meeting, which is incredible. And so really big congratulations to you, face. That's a huge number. And so that's, that's excellent. Welcome to the students. We're so excited to have you. I'm so excited that you are here. And I think it's going to be an excellent year. So thank you for doing an awesome job. And we're going to get you out of here on time. Promise. I'm almost done. Okay, I'm really excited for the advocacy committee. We have that on our calendar. We're going to work really hard. I'm really excited that we're going to have for like the first time, very like concerted coordination effort as a board. And that's something that I've been hoping that we can do for a long time. So I'm psyched about that. Very last thing, I talked at our work session about the read in Hillsborough, Hillsborough Reads or whatever they call it. For the, everyone in Hillsborough, even if you're unincorporated, you're in Hillsborough, you can participate. Reads the same book. And the library only would let me take five and they thought I was crazy, but I took five. So we have to share a little bit. So I'll pass it down. You can take one. Hopefully you want to read it. If you don't want to, you don't have to. We just thought it would be fun. And then give it to one of the other ones of us here and you can, can read them. I didn't read one yet and I'm giving away my copy. So hopefully somebody will get it back to me because I do want to read it. And then that's really all. We do have our next meeting on October 2nd, 2018. That is at the Hillsborough Civic Center in downtown Hillsborough because it is a joint work session with the Hillsborough City Council. So if you're one of the really cool people who likes to come every time, which we really appreciate that someone cares, you want to make sure you go to the Civic Center instead of here. So, all right, we are done on time. Okay, so we will adjourn. Good night.